Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Stricker.
Here.
McCarrigan.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. A notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Any changes? Citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency action? Okay, closed session. Council reserves right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Public comments. The purpose of this agenda item is to allow for public comment of items for potential discussion at a future meeting. Comments brought to the council are for information only. Council will not take any action on the item except for referring it to staff to address replacement on a future agenda. The comment period is limited to three minutes per person. Can you tell us your name and address?
Hi, Dan Marshall from the Parks Board Cemetery and Tree. It's great to be here, truly, Mayor, Council. It's been a long time. I had some physical issues going on, but unfortunately, but fortunately, we have found some, some angels in our community right up at the Regional West Hospital. And they have really changed my life around and it's going really well. So that's why my absence hasn't been here. Still with the park, I'd still make it to my board meetings, but I don't make it here. But anyway, I'm just, just wanted to let you know and thank you for your support of all the things we have done in the last few years, several years at the parks. We have created, I mean, we sat back here dozen years ago going, yeah, shall we come up with a pathway? We came up with a pathway. We received a phone call for a change in, we're gonna have the state horseshoe tournament here. So we took and we brought, and Mark, we changed everything over at the horseshoe pits. We repurposed the building, brought it over there, cleaned it up, put some new fencing, new concrete. And wonderful reviews from people from across the state for the two years where we have state championships here for the iron chuckers. And, and if you look, the, the, the campus over there is fantastic, you know, with, with the twenty-three club and, I mean, we just have accomplished a great deal of things. Eighteenth Street Plaza, it's been wonderful there. I tell you, we have, I mean, we grabbed a concrete man and put him in the Parks Department. And Mark really did quite, you know, he can lay some sod and it's really been amazing what he can do for us. But, but what that tells me is what we have in our community and what we have in your staff. Everyone's willing to work hard. You have a wonderful staff here that really is interested in, in our park system. We've kept the pool going. The, the only issue, one of the issues we have is we've lost a lot of trees and our campus is really thin. And so we, and I thank you for keeping that tree program alive to help with our residents there to at least put trees in their, their yard and we need to continue that. And I just, but with the twenty-three club, I mean, there are just many things that we've done and are continuing to do. But I, I just want to say thank you for that. I, I need to go through it, everything, and I don't need to, but you know, with the movies in the park, you know, we have several people go to that. And it's just, it's just been fantastic of the enthusiasm and the commitment of not only you guys, but our citizens. And what we've have accomplished so far and I'm very pleased with that and it's been wonderful. But just so you know, you have the, the most grateful, wonderful staff in your parks and your cemetery and your board. You really, truly do. And it's been a pleasure working with them and the hiring has been fantastic. And I just, it's, it's great to be part of this. I think you should be very happy with how your city's going because we sure are. There are some great citizens out there that really support what you have been doing and what we continue to do. But three minutes, thank you, all that be.
Thank you.
But thank you so very much again.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. And I'm sorry it took so long to get here. I do want to say next Wednesday evening, we have a meeting here at six. You're sure more than welcome to come join us if you'd like. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, the consent calendar, items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requested an item be considered separately. Questions or comments on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
In a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bid luck?
Yes. Bids and awards, council to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for the slide gate replacement project to Midwest Mechanical Industrial Services in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We've been waiting a while for these gates to get installed. They're on their way. And so now we needed to bid the installation of those. We'll have five, we'll have three at the clarifiers and two at the screw pumps. And we had one bid and that was for Midwest Mechanical and Industrial Services. I have not worked with them, but they come highly recommended from the slide gate company. They're contract now in Sydney, so they're doing the same thing there. We are underbid. We had, we had budgeted two fourteen and it came in at one forty-one and so that'd be our recommendation is we award it to this company and, and let them install the gates when they get here. Any questions? And we'll work close with them when they come.
Not that it matters in this case, at least in my mind compared to what was budgeted, but what did the, what would you say would be the reason the engineer's estimate came low? I just don't want to make sure there's nothing that got in the way.
You know, they're, they're out of town, so they're gonna have lodging and, and there could be some unknowns. When we build the frames, if the frames are bad, they could have added that into their, to their bid as well. But for right now, we're hoping the frames hold the gates and we won't let them install them if they don't. These things should go in and they'll stay in for a number of years. So it's just the unknowns and, and then their lodging and their food.
And then, Mark, these are essential because we need them in order for the whole system to work correctly.
Right.
With the filtering.
Flow and, right. We did get the, the main, the big gate for the headworks is in. That was the one we really, that's where the, we lined the pipe, the headworks building and then the pipe. And so these now will go in the clarifiers. They look like two spacecraft UFOs out there and then the screw pumps. But that controls, that takes care of our flows. We can switch flows and then to the screw pumps and so on and so forth and kind of a boring thing, but we really need the gates.
Okay.
How long do you anticipate it taking from the time they start to completion?
You know, when, when they get here, we'll find that out.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have any idea right now.
Yeah, sure.
But I don't believe it'll take very long, as long as the frameworks are good and, and the gates are here.
Yeah.
They shipped eighteen, so they should be here shortly after.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions, comments?
You need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the, awarding the bid to Midwest Mechanical Industrial Services for the slide gate replacement project.
In a second.
I'll second.
Any other questions?
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bid luck?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, reports from staff, boards and commissions. Council to receive the twenty-twenty-four annual fire department report.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Tom Shingles, Cusper Fire. Before you is the annual report for last year for twenty-twenty-four. I'm just gonna kind of go through, kind of methodically through it and just highlight some things and then obviously if there's any questions and you want further explanation or if there's something we didn't cover that you would like, please let me know. I'd be happy to address that. The last year, we started focusing on goals that we established in twenty-twenty-three. One of the biggest ones was our training. We wanted to really beef it up and, and get personnel certified for the positions they were in if they weren't already and then also certifying folks for that next step as they look to, to promote or increase their responsibilities throughout their career. So we, we did a lot of that and it was pretty successful. One of the projects that we started last year was updating our records management. We're doing that in collaboration with all the other county departments. And that's still ongoing. It's, it's bled over into twenty-twenty-five. We should be done with that. Our, our goal is to be done with, by April, but it might be a little later than that. That's to get prepared for the changes to the United States Fire Administration's reporting requirements. Which I just found out today, we are scheduled to update in August of this year for those reporting requirements. So that was exciting. We've been working with our emergency manager for region twenty-two to enhance our backup communications with updating the mobile repeater. So in case a tower goes down, we can deploy that repeater or if it needed to be used for a major emergency, we could deploy that. That's still ongoing and then we're gonna probably modify some of that in the future, but it's a, it's a big undertaking to, to do that. And we're also working to update, this year we'll be updating the local emergency operations plan with region twenty-two as well. So our specific focus on that will be the annexes in that plan for fire and hazardous material response is where we'll focus most of our efforts. Under fire prevention and life safety, last year we received our delegated authority back from the State Fire Marshal's Office. That's really helped with streamlining plan reviews and inspections and specifically for the licensure type facilities. So liquor licenses, daycare licenses, healthcare facilities. That's really helped. We also implemented a new plan review system called Blue Beam, which is electronic plan review system. And that's been really beneficial with communicating between the architects, engineers and contractors. Because we can make notes and then shoot it over in an email and not have to worry about drafting really lengthy explanations. They can see it shows up right on the plans. So that's been very helpful. We continue to use our compliance engine by Bryser. The little pie chart there that you see is an example of some of the things that we see on the dashboard. This is an example of the compliant versus deficient systems. So fire alarms, sprinkler systems, hood systems. Are they being inspected timely and are there any deficiencies that need to be corrected? We've always been in the ninety-eighth percentile. Last year was ninety-one percent compliance. We've never hit a hundred percent compliance, but part of that is depends on if the occupancies are actually taking care of those deficiencies or if they require multiple visits by us. But we've been using that system since twenty-twenty and it's been very helpful in, in helping to manage a lot of that. And one of our biggest accomplishments with inspections last year was improvement to our mobile food vendor inspections. We were able to conduct twenty-five inspections. The most we've ever seen, I think in the past, we've been lucky to hit ten or twelve and a lot of it's just because people weren't aware that they needed to be inspected. So we did a little bit of marketing and, and put it on our website and social media and, and a lot of them self-reported, conducted a self-inspection with the tools that we provided them. And they've been very successful there. So we will continue that this year and we're partnering with Garing to kind of honor both sides. So if they do an inspection in Garing, we'll honor it over here and vice versa. Our calls for service were up slightly from twenty-twenty-three, only thirty-seven more than, than the year previous, but we had a total of two thousand seven hundred eighty-five calls for service. Rescue and medical accounted for the majority of those, a little over seventy-one percent. And fires accounted for a little over three percent of those, which historically aligned with our own data as well as national data as well. Of the ninety-two fires that we responded to, forty-three of them were structure fires. July experienced the most fires of all types with nineteen. And the majority throughout the year occurred between three and five P M. in the afternoon. So most were in the afternoons and that's, that's pretty typical from years previous. Being that July had the most fires, I know the question might come up, how many were caused by fireworks? And there were, there were a few. We had two grass fires and we had seven trash dumpster fires that, that were caused by, by fireworks or related to fireworks. So not a tremendous amount, but that's about half of, of what we, of the fires we experienced in July. Response time goal is we, we try and shoot for a five minute from the time we're dispatched to the time we're on scene. We were able to achieve that sixty-five percent of the time. The national standard is to try and meet that about ninety percent of the time. So we're not too far off, but we're, we're definitely a little bit lower, but that's in line with most departments across the country, so. Reasons we might not make that would be inclement weather, incorrect address on dispatch, train delays. All of those are pretty small numbers. Like train delays, we only had thirty-seven. So it's a pretty small number, but, but it is a reason as to why we wouldn't meet that timeline. We provided aid twenty-two times to our surrounding departments. Most of those were automatic aid, or I'm sorry, most of those were mutual aid. A few of them were automatic aid with Garing. And then we received aid the other sixteen times. So not a lot of aid back and forth, but, but it's worth noting that we do help our surrounding areas and they help us as well when we need to. This is this, this is the part that I think is most fascinating. Our estimated fire loss for last year was about five hundred thousand, a little over five hundred thousand. That's only about five percent of the estimated value that we protected. So that's, I think that's a pretty good indicator that we're having a good response. We're making it effective when, when we arrive, so. Obviously, we'd like to see a number a little less, but, but I think it's still pretty indicative of our ability to mitigate fires. On the apparatus page, I need to make a correction. How I missed it and how everyone who helped me review it missed it, I don't know, but I left engine three off of there. I have engine one, engine two and no engine three. But, so engine three should be on there. It's a two thousand two Pierce dash pumper that we purchased back in late twenty-twenty-three. And it has a two thousand gallon per minute pump, seven hundred fifty gallons of water. And what makes it unique is it has a compressed air foam system on it, which we've used several times now and it works really well. So it injects large volumes of air into the foam to make it either stickier or fluffier, depending on how we, we need to use it, so.
It smothers the fire then?
Yeah. When we make it stickier, it can actually coat something and prevent fire from getting onto it. And if we make it a little wetter or fluffier, it'll penetrate a little bit deeper. So it's, it's been very helpful. We used it when we had the railroad type fire, which there's a couple pictures in the, in the packet there of railroad type fire down there off of Seventh Street. Here's an example. We used it on that and it worked, worked tremendously well for us, but with that particular fire, after it kicked off later on, we ended up just deciding to let it burn and we just surrounded the, the area to keep it from going anywhere. If you, as you look at our apparatus list there, most of our apparatus are relatively new and in good shape. We have, do have a few older pieces of apparatus, like engine two is a ninety-six. It's still in really good shape. It costs us virtually nothing to maintain. And that's one of the factors we use for determining replacement is cost of new versus maintenance and, and how we evaluate that. Engine one is our next one that we're looking at, considering replacing at some point and we would probably end up selling engine two and putting engine one into a reserve status. We did hire two personnel to replace vacancies last year, so we're currently at full staff. We were at the end of the year. And then I think finally, our, the last thing I'll touch on is our public protection classification. We were evaluated in twenty-twenty-two. There was a little bit of a delay in getting some of that information back to us and so last year we were advised that our classification was gonna drop from a three to a four. So we entered into a retrogression program to try and gain some points back. We did gain quite a few points back, but unfortunately not enough to kick us back into a three category. So we'll get the final report here in the next few months, but, so we'll know exactly where we need to address those areas. But the, the two areas that they, that are the hardest to address are staffing and deployment. I think there might be a potential for us to gain some back in the deployment analysis. Just because I think that when they evaluated it, they took in a little more area than we actually cover. But that I won't know until I actually get the final report. But overall, it's just a tool that we can use or that insurance companies can use to, to assess risk. That's what the classifications are. So the, the better your classification, the less risk is, is kind of how that works. So it's, it's a really complicated procedure with a lot of, a lot of math. In the end, it's, it's just a risk management tool, so. That's kind of the whole report in a nutshell. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll defer to the end if anybody else.
Tom, what's your, you mentioned new training. What's some of the new trainings you guys are doing?
One of the biggest ones is we were able to conduct, and we started this in twenty-twenty-three, the end of, but fire officer training, leadership training, that's always been really hard to get. But we were able to, to get some of that training in and, and get everyone certified. And so all of our officers are now certified to fire officer one and a few of them have gone on to get their fire officer two status, so.
Okay.
That's been a big undertaking just because it's very difficult to get that, especially at where we're at, just being on the opposite end of the state, so. Some of the other things, we sent one of our rope rescue members coordinators to Baton Rouge to be certified as a technical rescue technician. So he, he's certified in high and low angle and confined space. And so he's been training a lot of the staff since he became a trainer over there. And then this year, we're sending three more to do the swift water rescue training in, in Golden, so that we'll have three trainers that come out of that.
Other questions?
Yeah, just a couple of comments and, and maybe questions, but so on January eighth, I did a ride along with the fire department during a day shift. And I just wanted to compliment the, how in align everybody was with the values that are listed on way on early on here, the compassion, the excellence, courage, respect. One might think, well, I was riding along, so maybe they'll act a little different. Everything felt so natural, like it was just second nature. It wasn't like a, it didn't seem like a show to me at all. And I was thoroughly impressed with what, what they did and, and a lot of things. The Bryser, this is just mainly for your information. I have experience using that and it's like hiring another one or two inspectors to help you do the job. And it's a system where nominal fee, the system owner pays for those inspections, or the, the recording of those inspections. To give a real time at any point in the day dashboard of at that moment in time, what is this, what does your whole city look like in terms of reliability of your systems? I think that's a wonderful tool. Is there, the, the next are a couple of questions for clarification. You, when you said that, that there might be train delays for responses and did I hear you say thirty-seven?
I misspoke. It's twenty-seven.
Okay.
Is what we have, but yeah.
Is that all calls or just fire calls?
That was all calls.
All calls, okay.
Yeah. So twenty-seven out of two thousand seven hundred eighty-five calls was
Fair enough.
delayed by train.
And then the last might be a question, is there any reasons why that protection class might have dropped from a three to a four?
The, the biggest reasons were, so there's, there's several areas that they evaluate. Three main areas, communications, the fire department itself and then the water department. And so communications accounts for ten percent of your grade. We did relatively well in that. I don't have the exact number, but it's gonna be upwards of eight or, eight or nine points out of ten. Water department, we got about thirty-five out of forty points there. Fire department accounts for fifty percent of the grade or fifty points. And again, I won't have that final number for a couple more months, but the two biggest areas that our retrogression analyst touched on with us is our deployment analysis. Which is where, where resources are located, how quickly they can get there, how many resources can get there. I believe that accounts for approximately ten percent of that grade. I think we're right around three out of ten points. And the other part of it is personnel. How many, how many personnel do you have on scene? And this, they only touch on fires, so it, it doesn't matter on medical calls, rescue calls, accidents, hazardous materials. They only look at fire responses. And so with that, you know, they want to see in alignment with the national standard, which frankly is a lot of people. And we just don't have a lot of people. So that's really the, the biggest, two biggest areas that we would need to focus on. Our equipment, our training, all of those, we're doing really well in. It's, those are, but those are the two biggest pieces of that grade that, that we just don't hit. But again, it's a risk management tool and if, if we're comfortable with the risk and we're managing that risk, you, you gotta kind of weigh all those factors in. I don't see it being reasonable for us to look at the national standard for residential structure fires, seventeen firefighters to arrive on scene.
Wow.
It would not be reasonable for our community to have seventeen firefighters on duty at any given time. But it's just something to evaluate and just stay, just stay in alignment with, so.
But with Garing and you can call on SCUS before all, you can usually get that number if you need to.
Yeah, we could hit that number if we needed to. Now with, you know, with aid and everything, that, there's another formula in there. They only get about a third of that grade. So even if they brought, if they brought nine people over, they'll count them as three.
Okay.
So.
Well, I only asked the question because of, of that in, I've, I've went through experiences of redoing this several times. And quite frankly, it's something that And, um, quite frankly, it's something that, um, if you're not careful, you can burn dollars to save dimes. And so, um, I think the fire department does a wonderful job with the resources they have and the aid that they utilize and provide. So, but, um, the, the, the other, I guess, thing that is not often known is that, so insurance, this is a, what insurance companies use to establish rates for communities. And the, uh, the premiums that you pay, the fire risk portion of the premium you pay is less than five percent of that whole risk. So if you save five percent because you spent money to raise your risk, you're really getting a whopping point two five percent savings. So, uh, at, at most. So I, I just point that out, just if anybody wants to know.
Tom, while your calls are medical, do you have an E M T. on each shift?
All of our staff are minimum of an E M T. We do have, uh, one advanced, uh, E M T., which can do a little bit more. They can administer some, uh, medications and such. And we have one paramedic.
Oh, good, good.
So two more advanced level, uh, and then everyone else is an E M T.
Any other questions? Comments?
No, thanks, it was a good report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on the revised inter-local cooperation agreement between the city of Scottsburg and city of Terrytown for construction permits and inspections and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Mayor and council, this is just the, uh, provision to our agreement with Terrytown to do construction permitting and inspections. The, this is updating the nineteen ninety-five agreement. Um, the main changes are stormwater is referenced in here and then, um, references to electronic permits versus paper. And then updating it from chief building inspector to director. Um, other than that, really no changes to it, so.
You don't have any questions or?
And the fees are just the same as if you were in the city?
Correct, yep. Yep, we just use our fees and, uh, we just collect the fees, um, for payment.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So I need an approval of that?
Yes.
I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve, uh, the agreement.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, Kim?
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McHerrigan?
Yes.
Okay, um, council reports. Um, this item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Updates?
I didn't want to go first.
You know, oh, you don't want to go first? Matt, you wanna go?
Yeah, I can give a quick one for the zoo. I can give a quick one. So the zoo got some local sponsors and they got, uh, some new zoo maps made, since there's a tiger back. And Marvel the Fox. So he brought one of these for each of you, so I'll just send them down and you guys can look at those. Um, but anyway, these are new. And so as the visitors come in, this will be the new updated with all the new animals that have been brought in, uh, and changes that they've done. So that's all reflected in the new map here. And then they're starting a new program for elementary kids, um, create, paint and educate. And so they're doing it on weekends, um, and it goes all the way through April. And they bring kids in, they give them a snack and a drink, and then they do some artwork. And as it gets warmer, they'll move outside and do some outside activities. Uh, but for now, it's, it's inside and doing artwork. So that's turned out really well. And then the last update they had is they, they're bringing back the, uh, birthday package where you can have birthday parties out there. And, uh, it covers all the zoo fees and, um, some souvenirs. And then you can pick which animals you want to, for the birthday party. So that'll be back at the zoo again this summer.
Okay, Friday, we, uh, interviewed the chief of police candidates. So, uh, there'll be more on that to come. Civil service will meet on the eleventh and certify the test. Then I met with T C D. on Friday, had a great conversation with them. So I'll, uh, put a proposal in a report coming up, so. And then we'll interview four public works director applicants this week, so. Or next week.
Next week?
This week.
This week.
This week. Yeah, so.
Anybody else have anything? No? I attended a meeting, um, with a steering committee that's looking at a, at a park, um, north of the highway. So that was interesting. I, I'd not, wasn't very familiar with that project, so I kind of just sat in and listened and, um, the parks, um, director. Is he right?
Matt.
Matt, yes, Matt was there. So, um, they would like to, you know, partner with, with the city to create a park over there. So just kind of having conversations on what that would look like and a budget and so that was interesting.
Who's the steering committee?
Um, it was a group of individuals. Um, Megan was the person who.
Megan Hayward?
Megan Hayward was the person who kind of led it. Um, but there was all sorts of different folks there. Um, is it Kiwanis, is that?
No, Rotary.
Rotary.
Rotary Gold has raised the funds.
Yeah, they've raised some funds already that they have, um, and they're planning to do that again in the spring, so.
Yeah. Presumably they're working with the Parks, Tree and Cemetery Board?
Yes, that Matt was involved in, in the meeting and.
Megan, Megan is on that board as well.
Oh, yes, yes, she is, that's true. Yeah. So I think they're gonna meet again here after they kind of, her and Matt are gonna, gonna work together on some things, so. Anyone else have anything? No? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Of a second?
I will sign it.
Okay, thank you.
McHerrigan? McHerrigan? Oh, yes, sorry.
So that was my fault.
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.